Good morning, I'm Berks County Commissioner Christian Lineback and want to welcome you to our Commissioners Board Meeting for September the 25th. Obviously, we're in person, but we're also broadcasting on Microsoft Teams Town Hall and also broadcasting on BCTV. Before we have a moment of silence and pledge to the flag, I just want to call to everyone's memory that today they're having a special ceremony in York County for the three police officers that were shot and killed in the line of duty, very tragic event. Each of the Commissioners, I think, know one or more of the Commissioners in York County pretty well, and the Berks County Sheriff's Color Guard, under the leadership of Sheriff Mandy Miller, will be the Color Guard for that event. I saw Sheriff Miller this morning, and she told me that that's where they were headed from the Crime Alert Breakfast this morning out to that memorial. So please rise for a moment of silence and then a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll recognize Commissioner Santoni's Executive Assistant Lynn Burns to read the public comment notice.
Thank you, Chairman Lineback. Public comment will be accepted in person and throughout the Q and A function. Please include your first name, last name, and municipality for all comments. Any comments without naming municipality will not be considered. Each citizen can submit one comment. Comment length is dictated by limitations of the platform being used, Teams Q and A. In-person comments will be accepted first, followed by comments submitted virtually. The comment meeting period is limited to a total of 30 minutes, including both in-person and virtual comments. This time period may be extended at the discretion of the Board. Please be concise. Comments that are not germane to county business will be read during the meeting and should not be considered to be interactive dialogue with the Commissioners. The county solicitor shall be the final arbiter of whether a comment is germane and should be read. Any Commissioner response to public comment will be done at the discretion of the Commissioners.
Thank you very much, Lynn. The approval for the minutes for September 11th of 2025, I do need to note a correction. Right at the top, it was listed in the first sentence as September 4th, it should be September 11th. With that correction, are there any other corrections or additions? Hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as corrected. We did have an executive session on September the 17th dealing with personnel and potential litigation. Any public comment on specific agenda items? Nothing online, nothing in person. Well, it's that time of year again. It's National Recovery Month. On Saturday, a number of us, and I recognize some of the faces in the room, participated in the recovery walk. We had absolutely perfect weather for the walk, great time, really enjoyed the conversation. It was a little different for me this time in that, as I was walking, another person would walk up next to me and talk to me about their experience or what they were doing, and then another one, as soon as they were done, another one. And it's more than just a walk. For me, it's a continuing learning experience, hearing the stories of the lives that have been changed. And in some cases, and I don't remember the lady's name, but she does volunteer work at our jail with the ladies in the AA program. And she shared recently how one of the ladies after their program just came up to her and gave her a huge hug and thanked her for her volunteer work. And at the same time, this is a person in recovery that was doing the work. So I just, I can't say enough about the work of the various organizations in our community, but especially our single county authority. Every county has a designated organization through which policy and funds for recovery flow, and that's the COCA, Council on Chemical Abuse. And Yvonne Stroman is here. Yvonne, 1999? 1990. In recovery since 1990, clean since 1990. That is amazing. So take the podium.
Good morning. We come rallying in the spirit of recovery. Yeah, right?
Yep.
And we just are here, a small but mighty group representing the recovery community. As we observe National Recovery Month, communities across the nation come together to celebrate the strength and resilience of individuals in recovery, to honor the families who support them, and to recognize the professionals and organizations who work tirelessly to make recovery possible. While we don't have an exact number for Berks County, what we do know is that there are over 30,000 residents in addiction recovery here in Berks County alone. Initiatives like Recovery Support Services, Recovery Housing, Drug Treatment Courts, and the Warm Handoff have been instrumental to assist individuals in their recovery journey. Recovery is not only a personal journey, it is a committed, a community achievement. When individuals struggling with substance use or co-occurring mental health challenges are given access to effective treatment, compassionate support, and opportunities for reintegration, they can and do thrive. Their success strengths from their families, the workforce, and the entire community really are part of our resiliency. This month, as a reminder that recovery is possible and hope is real, is also a call to action for us as leaders and neighbors to continue building systems that reduce stigma, expand services, and invest in prevention, treatment, and recovery supports. On behalf of those of us who are walking that path of recovery and those seeking it, I just want to say thank you to our county Commissioners for ongoing commitment to our health and well-being in our communities. I always say, I walk across, well, not walk, but drive, you know, or visit different counties, and I will tell you from my conversations that nobody, no other county matches the commitment from Berks County. And so for that, we really truly thank you. Your support to create an environment where recovery can flourish, not only during this month, but for all year long, we say thank you. Together, we make every person in our community have an opportunity to live, work, and contribute in the name of recovery. And so I alone don't want to just say thank you, but I do have other representatives from around us to give warm remarks. I'm going to turn it over now to Scott Althouse, who's Executive Director of Easy Does It, and several, a couple of his residents, I want to say thank you as well.
Thank you, Yvonne. As I always like to say, you're an awesome ambassador of recovery, not only for Berks County, but for the whole Commonwealth. So we appreciate your service at COCA. And thank you, County Commissioners, good morning. It's a beautiful day. We got, we're getting some more precipitation, desperately needed for my trout fishing adventure next week, and one of my favorite recovery activities. You know, at Easy Does It, we have a loud and proud tradition of celebrating recovery throughout the year, but particularly in the month of September. This coming Saturday, in 48 hours, we have the Sober Stock Festival that many of you know about. For anyone listening at home or who is not aware, Sober Stock is a free music festival at the campus of EDI at 1300 Hilltop Road, and it's from noon to 3:00 this Saturday. It's free, there's a couple of great bands, it's a safe and sober event, family-friendly, lots of fun to be had, so I encourage you to come check it out, as I know many of us will be there, and it'll be a good time. I did want to say a word about some of the funding uncertainty that we are operating in, at both the federal funding uncertainty and of course, at the state level that impacts all county services. And without a state budget, the burden is shifted onto providers to front the money to provide the essential governmental services that state and county governments have the responsibility to serve to our, to our community. And I'm happy to report that EDI is able to foot that bill and front that money for some period of time, but certainly not indefinitely. And I know, you know, not every organization or provider is fortunate to be in the position that we're in, and I would hate to see, particularly for any drug and alcohol treatment service providers, to be threatened to shutter their doors, or any housing agency be threatened to shutter their doors on account of the inability of our state legislator to do their job. So I'm sure this is front of mind for all of you, and any opportunity that each of you may have to talk to friends or colleagues in Harrisburg within the state legislature, I would please ask that you convey the very good work that we do, that you know we do, that you have strongly supported for many, many years. So thank you for indulging me in that soapbox.
No, that's, this is the perfect venue for that. Our Commonwealth needs to hear the reality of their failure to pass a timely budget. We all do that. You run your budget. I'm guessing you don't go into a new fiscal year and say, you know what, we can't come to an agreement, we're going to take weeks or months to fight this out. I know it's more complicated at the Commonwealth level, but I'm glad that you pointed that out because it has real, serious impact. It's not a game.
Absolutely, thank you. On the bright side of things, I'd like to report just briefly that in the fiscal year that ended on June 30th, EDI had served a total of 126 unique individuals, all of whom have deep ties, if not residency, here in Berks County. And we had another year of excellent outcomes, and we do measure our outcomes across some traditional client-centered outcomes, such as abstinent rate, such as gaining or maintaining employment, such as meeting three or more goals in a recovery plan across various domains, whether that be education or employment. And I think we have two really excellent representatives that I'd like for them to share a bit of their story and their time at EDI. I'd like to first introduce to you Jim Lynch, who's been with us for well over a year. Jim, would you like to come up and share a bit of your story?
Hi, I'm Jim Lynch, I'm a grateful recovering alcoholic, and I really appreciate you affording me this opportunity to express my gratitude to Berks County and to EDI as well for all you've done for me to help me change my life and turn my life around. I'm very passionate about this, so I'll try to keep it brief. I'm a grateful recovering alcoholic, I'm also a grateful resident of Easy Does It Recovery Community. I found myself there, and it was one of the best things that's happened to me in my life. I was born in Northern Pennsylvania, I lived the second act of my life out in the state of Indiana, where I was happily married for almost three decades. I was a professor at Indiana University during that time, raised two daughters to adulthood and saw them into college. And since the time I was very young, I was a very high-functioning alcoholic until I was not. And I suddenly found myself needing recovery. I first got sober in Indiana. And I came here to take care of my elderly parents who had moved to Fleetwood back in, I guess it was 2020, or maybe 2019. But it was a few days before COVID hit, so I found myself staying with my parents a little longer than I expected. And after a while, I just realized that this is my home now, I'm moving back to Pennsylvania. I had a good run, I had about five years of sobriety. And, but I was kind of torn from the community I had in Indiana, and I felt very isolated, hardly knew anybody here. And I relapsed in 2024 and found myself living in a car, my car. And I knew that I had to do something about it, so I checked myself into rehab, went to Pyramid up in Dallas. I had an amazing counselor there, and she turned me on both to what is my primary path, which is recovery Dharma, and also she turned me on to EDI, to Easy Does It. She said, there's this, have you ever considered being a resident in a recovery community? I said, I'll consider anything, what do you have for me? And she said, there's this place, it's a little different, but I think it might be a good fit, and they do have recovery Dharma there. I said, all right, I'll give it a shot. And I ended up at EDI, and I found so much of what had been missing in my own recovery there. I feel very safe there. I have a strong sense of community yet again, not only within the walls of EDI, but through the people that I've met at various meetings, which just spread to nearby towns. I've made really solid friendships at EDI, people I'll be with for the rest of my life. They, we really look after each other there, both the staff and the residents. I know that there's people who have my best interests at heart. We check in on each other's health and where we're standing, and it's actually quite lovely. We have a community garden, we eat together, sometimes we cook together, we have events together, we go to meetings together. And it's really helped me to turn my life around yet again, and given me a supportive spot from which to recreate myself for the third act of my life. I've, hopefully, I've been applying to nursing schools and taking prerequisite courses. I'd like to serve the rest of my life serving other folks. And I found my people in recovery, and I always want to maintain connection with that field as well. I think there might be a nice overlap, and I've had the chance to explore that. I've had the chance to network, I've had the chance to heal physically, mentally, spiritually. I'm not a very religious person, but I think over the course of the last year plus, I've had this kind of spiritual awakening that I heard other people talk about, mostly through recovery Dharma, and it's made all the difference in the world. I once thought, only a few years ago, I'll never be happy again. And I'm actually the happiest I've ever been in my life right now. And I'm really grateful to y'all, and I'm really grateful to Berks County. I'd never lived here before, and it was a great option for me. It's life-changing indeed, so thank you very much.
A great message of hope, Jim, thank you for sharing that. I'd like to also introduce to you another resident, Martina Albelet.
Morning, everybody, thank you so much.
Morning.
For the opportunity to be able to talk a little bit about my experience. I came, I've been through the fire, and I'm standing, and that's something that I want to pass on to anybody that I do meet, whether they're in recovery or not. I came to EDI, I was homeless, I was in a really toxic and abusive relationship that lasted over 13 years. I'm originally from Brooklyn, New York, and within that relationship, I wound up being homeless multiple times, there was a lot of abuse, physical, mental, and other, financial especiallys. I was an RN when I began my relationship, and practiced for about seven or eight years before everything went down the tubes. Within that relationship, I wound up having two beautiful daughters, and wound up being displaced from them in that process. Came to Pennsylvania, thought things would be different, they weren't, they got worse and worse. And it wound up with me actually being saved by going to Berks County prison. And I wound up in a, in a room in the prison, thinking, how, what? Because I wound up in the turtle suit rooms. I was there for about 28 days, got transferred over to Pyramid at Lehigh Valley. And my main goal in that was not even to like save my life, but to get away from the entity that had trapped me for so many years too. And it was awesome because I went for, to Pyramid, I knew about EDI before I went there, and I, they wanted me to stay in Allentown. My counselors, everybody, they said, stay here, it's a great community. And I said, no, I want to go to EDI, I know about Easy Does It, I just think it'd be a better fit for me. And, because I didn't know anything about any other place in Pennsylvania anyway, so I was like, let me just try this out, and it will keep me away from my ex, because it's a safe space, and I know that he can't get in here at all, or whatever. So I wound up coming to Easy Does It in March of 2023. At this point today, I'm two years, nine months, and 20, I'm almost two years and 10 months, clean and in recovery. Thank you, thank you. And through my process at EDI, I was really, really happy because it connected me with a lot of different resources that helped me to pick the pieces of my life back up together and to form an even better life than I thought that I could, I mean, I've, the things I've achieved, I can't even imagine, I couldn't imagine a couple of years ago, I thought that you'd be crazy. I, you know, got all of my documentation that I had lost, that he had taken from me and destroyed. So like, it was things like getting a social security card, getting an ID, I did that through Berks County Pre-Trial Services. I have amazing people that work there, amazing. I got connected to Berks Counseling Center, my case manager there, stellar, amazing, helped me through every single step of the process to get to where I'm at, up until this June, when I finally graduated from case management at Berks Counseling Center. Throughout that process, I got connected to Karen outpatient, phenomenal therapists there, phenomenal, amazing groups. My RSS at EDI, and all the RSSs at EDI actually, and all of the entities that, our staff there, house managers, every single person that I've met along the way, I've gleaned from them because they were willing to not only give me opportunities, but look past what I might have appeared. Like what the, you know, because everybody has a stigma when you're in recovery, so people might not realize what's really underneath everything or beyond everything when they first meet you. And so they saw, I'm assuming, or I'm sure, they saw beyond that to see that I could achieve far more than what I thought. And so within this past two years also, I, I've been employed, I'm actually on break from my job right now, at the same place for over two and a half years, and have spread the message through everybody that I've met at that employment place, because I've gotten people from EDI jobs there, and then they have surpassed their wildest expectations, and then people change their perspective of who somebody in recovery looks like. So that's important to me. I started going to school, I went back to school, I'm a year out from getting my bachelor's of Ayurveda and, as a wellness consultant, and I've had straight A's throughout that entire process. I went for my Pennsylvania nursing license, this has taken about a year and a half for me to get through because of my charges that I had, so I had to go through a lot of process to get to where I'm at. And I actually appealed the New York State, I mean, the PA State Board's decision to put me into monitoring, because I've been to meetings, I go to multiple meetings every single week, I have followed multiple paths of recovery. I am, I was the CSR, I mean, the GSR of RNA Home Group over at EDI for months. I was, I was a sponsor temporarily for somebody, I have had the same sponsor for the whole time that I've been in recovery. Speaking of Sober Stock, I've done the bouncy houses there for two years, and that's still my spot this year, so come and see me. And I won the hearing, I represented myself, and I won, I didn't go with a lawyer, I won. So I mean, the strength that I found throughout all of this process has been phenomenal. Oh, and I'm a CRS, I took the CRS through COCA funding at RISE, so I did that too. And so like, all of these things, thank you, are phenomenal to me. And again, it's all about sharing the knowledge that I've gained and the opportunities that I've gained with everybody that I meet in the process, and I feel like the county's done an amazing job, and I do want to thank you for that. So with that, the end, thank you.
Well, it's been a few excellent, passionate stories of hope from Jim and Martina, and I think it just is a little bit different flavor than what we've offered sometimes in the past, some examples of, you know, a college professor and an RN who, you know, hit bottom but found their way out from under the rock, and, and look at them now. So there's more great stuff to come from both of you, and I'm sure there are many other countless stories in this room that we're going to hear a little bit more from. So I will say thank you, and turn it back to you, Yvonne, thanks.
Just want to encourage you to, you and reach out to all the other organizations that you know that receive state and federal funding, and reach out to the Governor's Office, reach out to the state legislators, and let them know what, how this is affecting you and the people that you serve as well. They need to know. We've been at it for weeks now, telling them, but the more people they can hear it from and get it directly, the governor and the General Assembly need to take action and get this budget passed, and hoping at the federal level, we won't have the same issue, because that would not be good at all. And one thing for Jim, I don't know the path you're going down to get your RN, but there's a local organization called Tech Central, they offer free courses there, you can get phlebotomist course, and there's one or two other courses in like medical-related fields that can help you get into that field and continue then your studies through RAC. So Tech Central, they're on South Sixth Street, Barbara can get you more information, Barbara here, can get you more information afterwards if you want more information on that.
Good.
Okay, yep.
All right, so we're going to just really acknowledge the work at the different recovery houses that we have contractual services with. We have not only Easy Does It here, but we also have the YMCA. And just to know, the Council on Chemical Abuse through contractual services with the county and publicly funded dollars provides about $1.5 million into recovery housing annually. And I also need to say for the taxpayer that's saying, well, why are we spending that? Because statistics demonstrate that for every dollar put into recovery, we save $7. $7 from people having to enter into emergency rooms, $7 from people having to enter into criminal justice system, $7 from people having to be hospitalized. And so we really need to recognize that those dollars are very well spent. Having said that, and I will get off my soapbox, having said that, I want to introduce Jenna, who's an intensive case manager from the YMCA, and she's going to introduce a couple people from their side of the recovery housing.
Great.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And guests, I just want to say this is completely out of my comfort zone, so bear with me. My name is Jenna Rivera, like Yvonne said, and I serve as an intensive case manager at the YMCA. First, I do want to thank you guys for the opportunity to be here today and for the work that you do in serving our community. The decisions that you guys make and the support that you provide have a direct impact on the lives of the people that we serve every single day. I also want to thank you for your continued commitment to investing in programs and services that bring hope and stability to individuals and families who need it the most. My job here today is to share just a glimpse of the impact that Recovery Support Services can have on individuals and on our community as a whole. Every day, we, and by we, I mean the entire agencies, the providers of the drug and alcohol community, we see people come through our doors carrying heavy burdens, whether it's substance use, homelessness, mental health struggles, or just simply the weight of starting over. What they often need is not just a roof over their head, but hope, structure, and people who believe in them when they can't believe in themselves. At the YMCA, we, with the help of our amazing staff, which some of them can't be here today, we provide transitional housing for individuals who are ready and willing to begin their recovery journey. We serve women and children, as well as individual women in recovery through our Women's Bridge House Program, as well as men in a variety of programs designed for co-occurring disorders, Spanish-speaking residents, and individuals on probation and parole who are committed to getting back on track. Each of our programs is structured to provide Each of our programs is structured to provide stability, accountability, and the tools needed to build a stronger future. Today, you started hearing and you will hear some more stories um directly from several individuals who have walked through this journey. Their voices are so powerful because they reflect the heart of what recovery truly is. Real people, real change, and real impact. Their progress is not just a personal victory. It represents healthier families, safer neighborhoods, and a stronger community for all of us. This is not just their stories. It's the story of what happens when a community chooses to invest in people. Recovery is not easy, but it is possible. Every bed we fill, every meeting we hold, every resource we connect someone to represents another chance at life. Again, I want to thank you guys for your continued support of the programs and resources that make this work possible. Your leadership ensures that people have access to the care and stability that they need to succeed. As you continue your important work, I ask that you remember behind every statistic is a face, a family, a future worth fighting for. And again, thank you for your time and allowing me to share today. Um, so with that being said, I have two individuals that are going to speak today. Um, our first individual is somebody who's currently in our um Women's Bridge House program, the woman with children's side. So she's going to share a little bit about her story and what the YMCA is currently doing for her.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to be a voice for everyone in recovery here in Berks County. Um, my name is Paige. I'm a recovering addict. Um, I grew up in where addiction runs deep in both sides of my family. Um, I started drinking at the age of sixteen and really had not had a long period of time of sobriety up until recently. Um, I have about fifteen months sober. Uh, my journey started, I had gotten locked up. Um, well, my hometown, my home county is originally Lebanon County. Um, so I had gotten locked up there for parole violation. Previously, I had been to multiple thirty day rehabs in and out of jail. I just, nothing seemed to stick. Um, so I was in jail for four months and I'd find out, found out that I was pregnant. Um, I had gotten out of jail, was staying with family, um, maintaining my sobriety. At that point, I had about six, seven months sober. Um, I had gone through something extremely traumatic. Um, and I relapsed. And after I had relapsed, I realized that I need to change my life, that this is do or die. And not only is it my life anymore, it is my daughter's life. Um, so I had reached out and I went to a Gordenzia Mommy Me program in Lancaster for six months. Um, after graduating there, I went to New Destiny up in Ashland, which is in Skookel County, and I did a halfway house program for six months there. Um, both those programs were extremely, extremely vital to my recovery. It gave me the time and the space and the support that I needed um in my recovery and as well as being a first time mom. Um, so from New Destiny, I had um gotten accepted here to the YMCA Y Haven program. Um, and I brought my daughter with me. And ever since being here, I started going to AA meetings. Um, you know, I have the support of people around me that are in recovery where um I knew that I had to change the people, places, and things where I was. And at first, I won't lie, I was a little hesitant to come here to Redding, to Berks County. Um, but I'm so glad that I did because ever since coming here, um, especially that my recovery home group, uh Walnut Street Recovery Group has been amazing. The YMCA, all the case managers and the other fellow women that I've met through my journey have, you know, helped me build a foundation and helped me gain confidence in myself that I can break a generational curse for my daughter. My daughter will never have to see me in the struggles of addiction and I can raise her in a way that she's educated on what about recovery and about addiction, where I was not raised that way. Um, so I just want to say thank you so much um for everything that you do for Berks County. Um, I'm very thankful to be here and I am now currently um chairing meetings at Walnut Street Recovery Group. I have a sponsor that I work with. Um, you know, I have the opportunity to give back to the people in recovery as well and I'm so thankful for that. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is going to be Hector. Um, he is a recent graduate of our Asia Adelante program that serves our Spanish-speaking residents.
Thank you for having me today. Uh, my name is Hector and I'm an alcoholic. I learned a lot about myself during this journey. I learned a lot about other people too. I learned that we're not by ourselves. And possibly we'll never be by ourselves. However, I also learned that I have to take the initiative and, and make uh clear the importance of the incentive of what value is my life. Um, but when, when I entered this program, I struggled with things like honesty, open-mindedness, willingness to deal with myself and my personal issues. Because the only thing that we deal with the, is not just alcoholism and substance abuse. This is something else that I learned about myself and about people in general also is that we have other things, other underlying issues that deal with mental health, deal with past trauma, and deal with other things that eventually led us to the alcoholism or the substance abuses that we learned. See, for me nowadays, everything is simply about a learned behavior. And just like we learn these behaviors, we can clearly uh uh learn how to uh, how can I say, um, forget them or, or keep them at, at bay, but not ignore them. Um, the YMCA allowed me the opportunity to believe in myself. WSRG EDI also allowed me the ability to believe in myself. Peace and Harmony Recovery Coaching Services, Coca. The conglomerate of services, gifts, I want to say gifts, that I've been given during the course of making a decision in my life to change has been a very holistic experience for me. You know, I've met a, a multitude of people, especially with the types of jobs that I've had and held in my past. Um, but at the YMCA, I've learned that, you know, health is key. Physical fitness is very important, right? But what about our spiritual health and also our economical health as well? Right? These parts that allow me to remain uh on a day-to-day basis, uh, a better person, a better version of myself are also allowing me to grow and sustain that, that image of myself. So that when I walk into society, people say, you know, I don't have to raise a flag to say, you know, here I am. No, I am. Today, I'm showing up for myself first, within my recovery, with the same people that helped me to become this person. Because today I can stand to look at myself in the mirror. Today I can say, you know what, kid? You did a good job. You remember that? You know what? You did a good job. I hadn't heard that. I mean, not for being in addiction. I heard a bunch of other stuff. But not that. And, and I love the idea that today I have, actually I have a choice to turn that around and go to places like RAC or Coca, the Office of Vocational Rehabilitation, and all these other entities that want the people to change and have the resources. But I guess it's safe to say that you need people like us to put their information out there so that we can make that reality come true for other people like ourselves. I mean, after all, isn't that why I have a sponsor? Isn't that why I have structure now supporting? They say if you stay connected, you stay protected. Today, I want to remain protected because I'm connected to the right people that I would not allow in my life before. It's just that simple. And somebody told me, uh, who I carry dearly for, you're either going to be an agent of change or an agent of chaos. You know, and I was gonna, I was gonna read the whole, you know, uh, Steven Spielberg version of my life, but you know, we all, we all heard so many variants of war stories that I just want to kind of focus on a twenty-four hour window of what my day looks like today. First, I wake up, I say, thank you, Lord, for keeping me sober. Another day, let me see how I could go out there and remain the person that you had me be yesterday. I don't know if that makes sense. That's who I want to be. So again, I want to thanks the YMCA for allowing me on this intensive and very clarifying lifelong journey that happens within twenty-four hour increments. I want to thank you guys for uh having us show you that it can be possible. Obviously, you know what you're talking about. Um, EDI, Easy Does It, at Walnut Street Recovery Group. Uh, I want to thank Coca again. I want to thank Peace and Harmony. I want to thank BCC. I want to thank everyone who's on the same, uh, who I'm now on the same page with. You know, um, that's all I got.
Thank you, Hector. That was powerful. Um, that's all we have for the YMCA today. Again, thank you guys for your um continued commitment to our programming.
All right. Um, and then next, we want to acknowledge uh Burke's Counseling Center. Some people have mentioned Burke's Counseling Center from a counseling perspective, but we also contract with them for Women's Recovery Bridge Housing. So I'm going to ask Paulette, who was their intensive case manager, to come up and introduce uh Chardonnay.
Good morning. Um, so my name is Paulette Dunkelberger. I've been with Burke's Counseling Center for seven years now. Um, I started as a case manager and kind of grew into the transitional housing position. I'm currently the lead housing case manager there. Um, a year ago, we were kind of worried we weren't going to be able to keep our doors open, but through the grace of Coca, we were allowed to do that and continue serving um women and children. We have six apartments there so we can serve six women and their children at any given time. I'm actually at full capacity right now, which is really a great thing. Um, it, it provides a safe space for them to kind of figure it out, to gain a support system and find employment, um, work on their personal goals. And someone did say um that it's not just about addiction, it's about all those other underlying things that we carry with us at any given time. Um, so I do want to introduce one of our residents that has recently graduated from transitional. And it is a two-year program. So they have two years to kind of get through their goals and, and work on employment and other things. So um Chardonnay.
Hmm, hello. I'm, I'm Chardonnay. Um, thank you, everybody, for being here. Um, this is pretty emotional for me because recovery is a um, it's a lifelong journey, but um my time at Burke's Counseling Center really changed my life. I can't, I can't express that um enough. Um, and so when you talk about their, the funding being in limbo or it not being passed, these things are critical because people's lives are at stake. And in particular with Burke's Counseling Center and their um Bridge House for Women and Children, it's, it's women and children's lives who are at stake. And um it's not until you invest in your recovery, especially as a parent. I have three children. Um, it's not really until you sit down, you get clean time behind you, um, you get some time and clarity to just understand the situation you're in. And again, as a parent, the situation you put other people in and how you may have never intended for that to be the case, but unfortunately it is. Um, in Burke's Counseling Center, I had, in this bridge house, I had the time to rediscover who I could be as an individual because my addiction made me a stranger to myself. And um that inability to connect with myself allowed me to create a true mess. Um, it allowed me to rack up charges. It allowed me to destroy relationships. It allowed me to um skip over opportunities. And when I arrived at Berks County in general, which has a very special place in my heart, um, I was a shadow of myself. And through programs like Burke's Counseling Center, through um education at RAC, through funding at Career Link, um, all of these pieces came together once I was able to just have a safe place to breathe. And that's where the Women and Children's Bridge House comes in. Um, I want to in particular thank people, one person I've never met. Um, I, I believe her name is Carol and she's the director. Never met this woman. Uh, she could pass me on the street and I wouldn't know her, but um despite making mistakes, despite um not always being at my best, women like Carol, like Paulette, like, like Mimi, like Lisa Fuller, who used to be um a case manager there, uh, may she rest in peace. Um, these women were able to help me in my recovery journey uncover the next chapter of my story. And um, you know, I, I've gone to meetings, I, I've done therapy. I've done a lot of things that have contributed to where I am today. Um, I'm a dental assistant. I finally have permanent housing. Um, I have the ability to, somebody mentioned looking in the mirror. I have the ability to actually look in the mirror and feel comfortable with who I am and what I see when before I truly used to disregard, not want to look in the mirror because I didn't like who I was on the inside. It wasn't even an external thing. It truly was, um, I'm dishonest, I'm, I'm broken, I'm an addict. Uh, I'm not always the nicest person. Um, I can be combative. Uh, I've, I've been able to work through a lot of those things through recovery, through funding that has been given to them. I do also want to thank uh Coca for being able to uh bridge that gap and keep the women and children's uh home open because I don't know where I would be today without that house. And I just want to finish by saying something so interesting about my time at the Women and Children's um Bridge House is that I want to say around the age of thirteen or fourteen, uh, my mother was a resident of the Women and Children's Bridge House, but she actually did not graduate. So when I came to Berks County and I started therapy and was placed within the housing, before I even got there, I had this very strange feeling that I was going somewhere familiar. And, you know, that house, that program just has such a place in my heart. I can't explain. I cook again. I sing again. I have faith again. I'm just an overall renewed individual. And that took And that took time. I'm grateful that the program is open for, for two years because it takes time, and I'm still doing that work. And the last individual I'd like to thank or entity would be Burke's County Probation, my probation officer. I had two different officers. They were awesome. They were greatly encouraging. And today, I just have a future that I would have never imagined. And it's because Burke's County. It's because of these programs. It's because of the individuals I've mentioned, but also individuals like you who are doing work to keep these programs funded and keep recovery continuing. So thank you for your time.
Chardonnay mentioned the criminal justice system or juvenile, adult probation in particular. So I just wanted to, and we have two more guest speakers. And I need to talk about the Burke's County Treatment Court Program, which combines intensive judicial supervision, mandatory drug testing, treatment and incentives to help participants with substance abuse problems and mental health issues break the cycle of addiction and reduce recidivism. The team is led by dedicated judges, prosecutors, defense counsel, treatment providers and probation officers. And I want to acknowledge Heather Winslow here this morning, who presides over the mental health court participants. The program is, provides intensive supervision of frequency of visiting with their probation officers as well as visiting with the presiding judge, courthouse appearances. And we also have a specialty treatment court residential program. So I'm going to ask Steve Mara, who is their director, to come up and say kind words as well as introduce a couple of participants.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Steve Mara. I am the supervisor of the Certified Recovery Specialist Unit with TASK and the Program Director of the Specialty Court Recovery House. But for me, more importantly than that, I'm a person in long-term recovery, which to me means that I haven't had a minor mood-altering substance in eight years, which I celebrated recently. And I'm really proud of, and it's still, it's still like strange for me to say that and like to be up here, like I'm not, I'm not really, this isn't my comfort zone. I should have taken notes from Gina and written something down, but that's okay. I don't want to say a whole lot, but I do want to say that I and a lot of other people are really grateful for the level of support that we have for recovery in Burke's County. When I found myself in a jail cell 12 years ago, I wasn't afforded the opportunity that a lot of our participants and residents are in the Drug Treatment Court Programs in Burke's County. And a lot of what we're seeing today is impossible without, without your support. And just to piggyback off something that Jenna said, it's really about more than dollars and bed placements. Behind every one of those is, are people. You know, and there's a ripple effect that goes from that one person that finds recovery to everything in the community. I mean, before I came into recovery, I was not much more than a drain on society. And today, I am a son, a brother, a father, a husband, an employee, an employer, a member of a recovery community. And that one bed can start all of that for another person. So I'd just like to thank you for your support and to plead that you continue your support. And with that, I want to introduce two of our residents of our Specialty Court Recovery Program. So first, we're going to hear from Alex, and then I'll let Nick come up too. So, thank you.
Hi, good morning.
Morning.
Hello, my name is Alexandra Horishak. I'm 37 years old and suffered over 20 years of addiction. On December 4th, 2024, while sitting in my jail cell, something clicked. I no longer wanted to live the life of addiction. I wanted help and was going to ask for it. On October 4th, I will be celebrating 10 months clean and sober. This journey, it's been a long time coming, and I never thought I would have got there. But with the help, you know, of you guys and with these programs, I'm definitely, I'm proud of myself. Definitely am. So this journey wouldn't have been possible without the Specialty Court Recovery Program as well as the Mental Health Treatment Court Program. When I first came to the programs, my life was a mess of untreated mental illness and a bunch of poor life choices. I felt hopeless for years, but for the first time in a long time, I finally felt hopeful. The programs were my turning point. Instead of a path of punishment, I was offered a path of healing. The entire court team didn't see me as an addict. They see me as a person in need of a little help. They connected me with a bunch of resources, some of which I didn't even know existed. I finally got the right medication, treatment, therapy, and a wonderful support system. The programs always gave, the programs gave me the tools to manage my mental health. I learned how to identify triggers, cope with difficult emotions, and make healthy life choices, as well as build back the relationships that I have lost with my family. I found stability I once thought I never would have. The programs are not about punishment. It's about helping restore your life. These programs gave me a second chance, and I'm living proof that it works. Recovery is proof that it is possible to make a brand-new ending, no matter your beginning. The path is not always straight. There are falls and setbacks. But our greatest victory is that in never falling but rising every time we fall. I am deeply grateful to everyone in the Specialty Court Recovery Programs, to everybody here, and to the Mental Health Treatment Court Program. You helped me rebuild my life, and I am so very thankful.
Morning, all.
Good morning.
My name is Nicholas Sessorio, lifelong resident of Reading. The Treatment Court Program for me has been quite a journey. Chardonnay said she gets emotional. I too do feel the same. So like, being here, growing up here in Reading, I've also been a lifelong resident of the criminal justice of court probation, state time, three different state numbers, all because of drug addiction and mental health issues, trauma, you know, dysfunctional family. I wasn't until last year, while sitting in a cell, like I heard Steve say, I was sitting in a cell. It was sometime in March, but I was talking to a public defender, and I asked him, what can I do instead of getting out of prison and resorting back to the same old things? You know, what can help me out? And he recommended that I sign an application for the treatment program. Due to my record, I really didn't think that I would be, you know, considered for the program. By the grace of God, I was, and you know, I'm grateful, very grateful. The reason that I did that, though, go back, was because while sitting in a jail cell on a tablet, talking to my, at the time, five-year-old daughter. She was going through some issues at school. And when I asked her what was going on, she said to me, Daddy, you're not here. That was the turning point for me. You know, I had to consider that. God gave me a gift, a little girl. At 48 years old, never in my mind that I ever believed that I would have a child. Today, I'm 55 with a seven-year-old. And it's getting better. You know, she's latched on to me like you wouldn't believe. The program has afforded me to do a number of things. I'm an elections judge, if you could believe that. Like, I never really thought that my name would be associated with a judge in a good, in a good way. And so it made me, I'm a judge of elections. I'm in school back at RAC. I have 21 credits in social work. Taking two courses now, and even though they're hard, man, like I'm still treading forward, you know. I had a few bumps in the road, even in the program, and they didn't, one thing that the Treatment Court Team didn't do was send me backwards. You know, I had to go forward, and they helped me along the way. They didn't just give up on me, which is, you know, a blessing for me, you know what I mean? Because there's some times that I think that, you know, I'm not worth it. You know, I have low self-worth, self-loathing, low self-esteem. These are my mental health issues. But through treatment, you know what I mean, things have seemed to have been getting better, you know? They are getting better because I'm getting better and I'm doing better. I can't be more grateful, man, than to this program, the judge, you know, the treatment team, the funding that comes from you guys, you know? The YMCA, you know? Like, I just, they just helped me to keep pushing forward, man, you know what I mean? No matter what obstacles are in front of me, man, like, we can tackle them. And then I say "we" because it's a team, you know what I mean? And they helped me along the way to, you know, overcome some hurdles. So, you know, like, I couldn't really be more grateful. Yvonne Strowman, you know, God bless her. She's a wonderful pillar of this community, you know. And again, like the judge, you know, she, she, she's a very beautiful person, you know? And I'm grateful. Like, that's really all I can say about this program. The program is wonderful. I'm now a Phase Four member of the program. And, you know, it's getting easier, and it's affording me the time to go ahead and dig back into my life, you know, continue with school, getting home to see my daughter, spend time with her, you know, do homework with her. You know, now we're sitting side by side doing, you know? So, and I want to be that inspiration for, you know what I mean, that example. When all that's possible, only because of the Treatment Court Team, you know what I mean? Giving me the opportunity to be a better person. Again, I thank you all for allowing me to be in it. Thank you.
So that concludes our presentation for you this morning. I do want to acknowledge, we have Luke Stopper, who's another provider for us from Recovery Coaching Services. Luke, would you wave your hand? He's the executive director. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Jackie Steed, who's our Assistant Director at the Council on Chemical Abuse, and Laura Catalano, who's our Communications Coordinator. Again, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all that you do and the hard decisions that you make, but more importantly, how you inspire us to continue one day at a time to do the next right thing in the name of recovery. And with that, I'm just going to end our time this morning and say thank you.
Just a few quick comments. Saturday before we began the walk, I used the reference, the demons of addiction. Chardonnay, the one quote that I wrote down from everyone was, "My addiction made me a stranger to myself." Addiction, I don't know it from a personal standpoint. I know it through the eyes of people like yourself. It is rough. It is tough. It's trying to take you down. And I appreciate each of you in your story thanking people, thanking organizations, and thanking counties. But I have to point out, we can't make the change in your life. Only you can do that. We are there to be a hand when you say, "Help me get back up." We're there to help you get back up, but we can't make you get back up. You've made those decisions. And we talked Saturday briefly about, it's not one time and done. You get knocked back down, and I hear again and again of lives of people. You get back up again. You get knocked down. You get back up again. So I want to say thank you to each of you for making those tough choices. When the world seems as dark and as hopeless as you probably could ever imagine, you still got back up. And Coca, I'm not going to get all the groups here, Easy Does It, the Y, the Counseling Center, TASK, and many other organizations, they are there to be that hand to bring you back up. And it's worth it. It's worth it just to hear the stories. It's worth it to know that lives are turned around. But for skeptics on the outside, they've got to understand that dollar to save a seven is real. Because if there's no help, you're back in our jails, you're back in our hospitals. In many cases, you'd be dead. Instead of being a part of this community and being in a position to give back to the community. So thank you very much for the decisions that you've made to get back up each time you got knocked down. So thank you and God bless. Any other comments?
Just briefly, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I also want to reiterate, I know that there was a lot of thank yous toward us for what we do, and we're very proud for our relationships with Coca and all the different organizations. It's something that we really take to heart. But I want to throw those thank yous back to all of you. You know, people call it a cliche, but it does take a village. I think it's important, and we all have a responsibility. And sometimes you need that help, and sometimes you have to provide that help. And so thank you for your advocacy. Thank you for your commitment to our county and to all those that were brave and stood and told their story. It's really inspiring. I'm sure it's, it's a challenge and it's hard, but it does not just helping, to help yourself, but it helps others. And I think that's what it's all about. So I want to throw that thank you back to all of you for all that you do to make Burke's County a great place to live and work and to raise your family. And my only, one piece of advice to Professor Lynch, I know you taught at Indiana University, but you know you're in Penn State country now. I just want to give you that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here today, and thank you for sharing your stories. That's the most powerful thing that you can share. You have to share your stories. Sorry. Trying to get through this, for those of you that know me, I've shared this before, but I'm here due to the decision my dad made at Team Challenge. My dad grew up in Puerto Rico. He made the choice. He said, "I don't want this life anymore." He was thrown out of school, eighth grade, in gangs, sold drugs, used drugs for many years, and at a point, he said, "I don't want, I don't want this anymore for my life." Call Team Challenge came up, and while I heard some of those stories, my eyes started to water because just remembered him. He passed about 10 years ago, but he lived 45 years in recovery. All I want to say is just continue to share your story. That's one thing that I regret, not being able to tell him more often. But he was ashamed of who he had been. He was ashamed of what he had gone through. He was ashamed that he never finished school. He was ashamed that he was in gangs. He was ashamed that he went through jail. Although he helped many through martial arts, but he never really shared his story too much. And that's something I wish I would have told him, to say, "Dad, share your story." So I just want to So I just want to encourage every one of you to share your story so you can help other people that are going through your same situation. Okay, thank you.
So we are going to accept a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I do have to read the one ordinance, but this will save us time. I'm going to suggest we also reserve any of our comments because we do have an election board meeting. But I must read, enact, enactment of County Ordinance 022025, an ordinance of the county of Burke's, Pennsylvania, pursuant to Act 48 of 2024, establishing a county demolition rehabilitation fund and imposing a fee to be collected by the Burke's County Tax Claim Bureau from purchase at sales under the real estate sales law and by the Burke's County share from judicial sales in mortgage foreclosure actions, defining terms, and providing separability repealer and effective date. So that specifically called out as part of the agenda. I would accept an emotion, a motion now to approve the agenda, including the ordinance.
I will make the motion to approve the agenda as presented, including the ordinance.
Second, the motion has been made, and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Treasurer, saying controller, it's up to you. You can read them, or you can just simply submit for the record.
I would like to submit for the record, Commissioner.
Thank you, Treasurer Mitch Darkort.
Mr. Chairman, the same, I'll submit for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Controller Joe Rutterow. Appreciate that. I'm not going to make any assumptions here. You can pass on the COO comments. Thank you, Larry. Commissioners, are we willing to pass on our comments?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
That is fine. I will add one thing. I'm going to try to make it to sober stock. If you can get out there, it's absolutely a great time. The weather looks like it's going to be absolutely perfect. So with that, any public comment? There's none online. Looking up there, maybe there is. Hold on a second. No, there is not. Nothing online, nothing in person. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Meeting is adjourned, and are you going to go right in?